Guys, I can my phone from I do with time.
Uh, so ten Z is sort of four hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, it started to break them up. But.
Yeah.
I love you.
But then I was. Which. They also just up didn't get us, so now it got worse.
It's almost there.
Well, we could be in California, they had fifty two.
Fifty?
Hard zero over the weekend.
What?
What? So when I read it, it's like. Well, they work up there. Or I don't know, maybe. Sure, that's what I read. This is in a newspaper, must be true. No, it wasn't in California.
But, but, but.
He's not on yet.
Alright, so we're recording at six o'clock and we have board members here, so I'm gonna call it the. Call order of the meeting, this regular meeting of the Danville School Board Directors. There are four of us here, I'm waiting on Melissa Conley, she should be there immediately. And so we have the vice discussion, may move some things around, so. Um, we're all in the same room, introduce ourselves if anybody completing cardio, chair of the board. From ten to ten more. They. They told.
My.
Okay.
And Mark Tucker Superintendent. Mike and Justin.
Sarah Walsh Elementary.
Dave Shelling, technical learning director.
Alright, you still, you're saying it, yeah, we're laughing at your name if you would. Alright, and so that's everybody who's here and we're going to move on, are there any additions, any changes to the agenda?
Only did you get. Um, since.
I think you told us something important that should have been to the board. Okay, no additions or changes to the agenda. Uh, we're now looking at the minutes from December the sixth, the December the sixth minutes were distributed with the packets, you had them prior. Molly had them up by about some of the, some of the eight, and they're all good, anybody have a chance to read through them?
I would, I'd get it on the, um. Under. Uh, I wonder if they always need under the November twenty ninth minutes. One. Yeah, the motion, it just needs to read November twenty ninth instead of November fifteen. Which is, I just put fifteen. But make that change.
So we have one type of right, what errors to be corrected, um, anything else, anybody? There are no anything to motion for. Have a motion to put within the, within stand for in second.
Second.
Full here, all in favor of approving those minutes, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
The most areas. Alright, so that's good, moving on administrative reports. Superintendent, please. Can you pack it? You know, this is going on. Well, then. And again, I have an agenda, but not. You know, exactly. Right.
So I believe the consultants are here. There's a. There's a. Think it was four. So your consultants at the agency hired coming to detail, sort of, uh, evaluation. They're coming out with a. Access to our. Uh. Very detailed for its component for. Um. The power of energy renew America's schools grant is a great opportunity if we can pull it off. Number of things that we're going to fill in the fall into the eligibility category, so I'll be working on that. Specifically. At the, submit a concept whatever. Maybe he's made it to Delta project. Across the. Those second schools. Um. Yeah. Nothing new on PCGs as far as the end of work, you got a letter, um. I think it was yesterday, uh, from D E C with a. Uh, an update on status on what the testing, uh, results were. Already start mitigated. The existing, uh. Uh, existing findings at the school here, so. Waiting now for a work plan from the engineer to come in to do source testing. Uh, they're significantly behind on work, I think we're talking. But it's been time. Uh. As far as the state's concerned, we've done. Can do after the year. These are okay for now.
All those filtration things are in all of our. All our mitigation.
But yeah, there was only a couple sponsors.
Right, right, the ones that we put under it.
Yep. And yeah, they turned on the. The, um, those big EPO filters that we. Were given last year actually have carbon concentration. Because they should, uh, it's like three different kinds of. Moved a couple of units around. They said there were more than enough. Yeah. Um, and, um. We're ninety nine point five percent there in terms of a teacher contract settlement, still across. These are dying a couple eyes and, uh. When we get signed on with the association ratifiers. Uh, then I'll be bringing that back around. We may not get this all ratified before. The periphery cycle, um. We'll see. Now, we're just here, we're gonna potentially have. There's at least one more meeting coming up with Daniel. If they're ready. I'll, I'll ask to put, I'll put down. So this, this report to ratify. But we're meeting Thursday, if you have the council has to sign.
And does the CCSU board have to sign off for the history board side?
No, no, there's no real sequence on that, but we're gonna, oh. Probably call a special C C S U.
Right.
Well, we're further on.
Okay.
Uh. What's that? Another one, other now, we're back to vacation.
Any questions for the superintendent? Hearing none, our student services report, we can pack it, if there's no chance to do that. Four numbers. If anyone has any questions, they can send them to me. Alright, here's then, uh, we want to refresh the report, first report about to a Monday. And, um, a chance to talk about it, you may have a chance to read through it, any questions? I'll turn it over to Larry and Sarah, if you'd like to talk about anything that's in it.
So one of the things that we really want is to highlight in light of budget season is. Uh, the work that our interventionists are doing and that interventionist positions that we. After and this year were. With S R fund, so. Um. The, a lot of the narrative section is written by them, roughly, uh, from them and the work that they're doing with. Uh, students at the various levels. And. Both of us feel that this is. That they're invaluable resource to helping to strengthen a lot of. Instruction to students and helping to support students and, um. Making sure that they're reinforcing what we taught in, in the classroom. And as well as the recovery that has to happen as a result of COVID and being. Schools for those months and then just having education shift, um, for such a long period of time. That's what we wanted to share with you, there wasn't a lot of school day. Well, what we want to highlight, Emily's concert, do you have any?
Emily's concert.
Not Emily's concert, I know that's a student or a concert, sorry.
Was. I was a lead student and I watched a lot of concerts over the years. And. On the help from the. Teachers, like the kids. This video. But. No, that can bring from King of Access TV. Yep. Page of pictures from. How to do the sound group. And, uh, put those on her Facebook page. But it was really good shot. It just was fantastic. So.
Are there any questions to the principal's here?
I just had a question about, um, how for the future. Their testing is, but, uh. Compared to the state of before COVID and the practice is different?
I haven't compared the star data, star test. Data this year to, uh. I find that, um. There's too many variables to compare it and use it for much year to year. Um, but throughout a school year. It's, it's pretty good to see. I'm doing the second round of testing in January. So. Hoping to present some data, at least for grade seven. Other grades as well. After this round of test. Now. It has to be, you know, aggregated data, we can't really. Too small enough to see, you know, if you know that. Um, there were a lot of kids in the fall below the fish, that were where that was. Hopefully we can see fewer.
Yeah.
On the fishing. January. That's the hope.
And the state class thing is different, but they are.
Right, right, this is part of our local assess system. Yeah. And, uh, so we purchased, I don't know, several years back. Um, a subscription to start through sixty. You know, it's wildly imperfect, it's pretty good screener. Well, you can always find something wrong with everything, but I like it, gives us the good reports that we can show you. Uh, you know, at the next meeting where they want to appear once, and that's what they got. And they'll see. See, like, what? What?
In the state data, you can't compare the two.
The state data has been so crazy the last few years. You know, you have to go all the way back to the spring of twenty nineteen to have data that maybe was reliable. But then twenty twenty, they didn't test. Twenty twenty one was the, the hybrid year. And so you had to test, you're supposed to test everybody. And that meant. The district, I was, we had to pull kids, the kids who were living remote schooling came in. Yeah. And tested those who were willing to show up this year. And last year, it could be tens of thousands. You know, for the entire fall. Classes and teachers being quarantined, some of them at the same time. And so to put any stock in any of that testing. Yeah, I just don't, I just, I don't see how it's gonna give us.
Add it to it because it's a once a year test, it's, it's not. It, it's really tough to get student buy into the test. And then it's, it's a different format, it's different than this are.
Yeah.
Um, and it's format two, and so that, that is sort of the alien nature of it.
Yeah.
Makes it.
Yeah.
Um. Right, right, but the, but the, the test itself also passes on. Which is why they switched.
Right.
Which is why they got rid of it.
Right, so then there's gonna be a new platform. This spring that would be known enough as, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Which will be in the.
Yes, and so then you won't be able to take that data for the.
That's what's, the star school because they can take it, you can take it as many times you want, it really added.
Yeah.
To see a, a baseline.
You know, some kids. Uh, were taking them over the company as part of their. Use it. It's not a great progress monitor tool that you can use it that way. Yes, I guess teams after. Used that data during testing.
Yeah.
Test to help us. Yeah, and I'll, I'll, like I said, we, we've got someone to bring once they do the second test. This chart, I thought of using really just to show that. You know, when they, when kids arrived this school year. The academic need was, was great. And. That's not gonna happen solved by January, even if it's great growth. That's gonna take years to. Has always been. So is that teaching the test, you keep giving it the overall with me? It's, it's actually a computer adaptive test. And so it, it actually adapts to the answers you get right, wrong, gives you, let's say you get a. Let's say you get a twelfth grade ta- uh, test question. And you get it.
Right.
I said it in the last.
Yeah.
You know, uh, you get a few of those wrong, it starts giving you easier questions, questions on, on a different. Standard essentially. Until you start getting those right, and it finds the sweet spot, that's how it says.
Yeah.
But it compares to, we, I usually compare to everyone in the state uses this particular brand. As opposed to just. Cause I think it gives a more accurate picture. It, it's based on a standard, which is top or. All plug this review as well.
But it helps get through the standardized testing.
Yeah.
I think it's very good to have it.
Yeah.
This test we take.
Yeah, I think they're kind. And you were using the data. Just. So the teachers are using the data.
It's all. Um, this does not look good. At all. This is something. And this was with, um, the help of the interventionists.
So this is taken, this is taken in the fall, so the first month of. Uh, the school year.
Hmm.
So what we wanted to do next month, for next month's meeting, uh, is show. Two different testing points, because Stephen Rose. That happened from. September first through the end of January. So.
And we had interventionists that were on the grant.
Would have had some in the building and there's, you know, there's.
Were any in work, right?
Yeah, there's some big work that they can do. A woman is big enough to meet as many as we have. But we could give enough intervention to have several more. Well, I mean.
Right, exactly, prior to last year, they, they had one interventioner for literacy. Covered in seventh grade. And one interventionist for math covering anywhere from seventh to eighth grade in a day, and that's. It, that's not, not. And so that layer added additional interventionists that were specifically dedicated to middle high school. It's huge.
Right.
So this is. Well, this is. Yeah, I mean. The numbers have been in passing. Some of our smaller schools. Danville has had similar opportunities to all in. Right.
So the interventionists that have been working. Uh, but, you know, really brand, which, um. Yeah. Which levels would, uh, have they been working on and, and which lines they affect, I'd love to see that. Um, fifth grade, uh, reading. Twelve and five. That, that would be, you know, that'd be wonderful, the interventionists were working there. And then where you have like a three and seventeen or three and twenty, they haven't been working there, that really gives the value of. The work they have been doing.
Yeah, but you also, Dave, you're right, up to a point, you also have to factor in the, the, the fact that those. S R hired interventionists have not been on board long enough to have these back. The title front of the interventionist. So there's two different kinds, I don't wanna call them, I just say classes, they're just, I'll leave it that way, but. We have some that have been here for a few years and then we have, we brought a couple more on and have them. You know, they haven't been here long enough to. You know, to barely judge their impact on the kids at their work. The most.
The other thing, this is also a, a fall assessment, which you're dealing with. Really the knowledge they gained last year in their partial year plus summer slide. So you have sort of those two factors that also impact you. We would hope that we would see some. Some differences in the, in the neck of our head down.
Actually, I think that all of last year, we did not have a map interventionist, right, we had, we didn't have that person. Right, that this is that in the budget, then grant under the.
Right, for the second.
For the, for the secondary, right, that interventionist wasn't there, we didn't make that, we didn't make that higher until April for the coming year. Right. So that we can move to current middle school that. Or was it an interventionist like that? Can we com- uh, compare this to what we did in two thousand nineteen? And he just said there's no value in that comparison.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I can take a look at that. I think there's so many variables that are different. Well, so years later, then, I'm not sure what, you know, you could go, you could look at ninth grade and see what they did in twenty. Those kids.
Right, your ninth graders would have been your sixth grader, so how did they do?
Could look at that.
Well, they would.
And that's also right. Right, like you also need factor in that, so.
So it's sub limited, I'm, I'm not sure that we're gonna get a lot of actionable data out of that. I think they could, but. I didn't choose to yet, especially without this first round, first day to come. Next, in the next.
The best use for this data is to take it, see what you have, and then that's where you apply your intervention. So that's where you, you target specific skill, that you target specific groups with your interventionist and possibly.
We also, we also used it, uh, this fall data at the high school. We looked at current tenth grade, which is a year old, they don't, they don't take tenth grade. Looked at current ninth grade and we. We spent a faculty meeting kind of discussing, okay, what does this data tell us? For our teaching today? The teachers had that conversation, so it wasn't about individual kids, it's not classroom. Uh, that, that needed. But that was a really valued thing to hear teachers say, well, okay, so I have to remember that a number of my kids might not be reading at K though. So I can't just give them science article. That's written for twelfth graders or ninth grade. Right. Yeah, so we've had conversations like that. In order to use the data to.
And another thing that we, we're really working on is the classroom instruction. Just meant shifting our math program. Programs intensive T V work in writing. Then looking at where we need to. To make sure that. We're getting the kids that. That we're making sure that our teachers are prepared. So look at that. Thank you.
And just, but we did, when you said the ninth grade, the tuition kids coming in, that impact that, those kids have more needs that are.
It could or couldn't, just it means that the eighth grade student to your assessment and obviously.
Not the same.
As long as it's, like, right. Without getting.
Right, yeah.
But I guess it also doesn't really matter how they went to sixth grade, just how they're, how they own, based on this test.
Right, and I think that's, that's.
I mean, it's been what happened in the sixth grade and everything that's happened until now, it's just. This is what we're. Get focused, please. Okay, any more questions for the? Alright, move on to the student rep, uh, report which came in, does anybody have any questions about student rep report, it came in really late, can read it. And we can get Thomas to me to. Thomas is at a basketball game, so we can probably, we can come in. If there are not on the board business. Uh, on the board business, and so board business, Melissa's here, so we're ready to go on the budget. And. I'm gonna give it to, I'm gonna give it to Mike, I'm gonna give it to you.
Mike's gonna drive.
I'm gonna give it to you, Mike. Can you make in the calls? I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, it's, I can, so Ian Thomas's report, he mentions, before we move on. Thomas's, he mentions a survey for everybody, if you could, please take that back. So pick, pick one of the link to take the survey. Who's everybody, everybody?
Everybody.
Every single, when you click through the link, every single, uh, demographic is. Recognized inside the survey, and you can fill out who you are, students, teachers, board members, members of the public, I think is even there, so.
He probably went in the newsletter right before vacation. I don't know what time in the newsletter. I think he's hoping to get board member, anyway, so.
He's like, really? He's like, if your data, if you want with. Alright, now, Mike.
Wow. So let's, let's just start. First page. As a.
You want to big that up?
Sure.
Big you laid it?
Thank you.
Bring it up?
Did you get up? That's fun. Alright, hope that, that, that's still not big enough.
You don't like this.
I got more seats back, you can come watch.
It's huge, larger, it looks like you're not full screen on your.
Oh.
Not possible?
What, I think? Is there a way that, like, it's a bar?
I'm not shy. Morning.
Yeah. Yeah.
Still, right?
Right.
Um. I can see, I can see it with, with the top part.
Here's the good news, everyone events they had now, it's actually the very first page. We're starting with the sum, so if that is a nice word, I don't blame you to say that it is. Um, we have that, it's on, I can talk to the. For those that wanna hear me.
Okay.
Okay. So. This budget has, has presented previously, nothing has really changed outside of getting. Uh, finalized C L A numbers, I believe the last time we did a draft. Yes. That it's several. And my memory is not as good as it was years ago. Uh, we had equal less people, we had a draft of them, you know, like version one, it changed very much. We had a yield rate, but we did not have the C L A. We were all anxious to find out how was the C L A gonna impact? The tax rate once we had that number. Okay. Since then, the yield rate came, the C L A came in rather unfavorable. Down about six percent. I took the liberty of, of make some adjustments on the revenue side, which we're gonna get to, to combat. The fact that the C L A dropped, which is not good, well, that's how you look at it, it's good for those who own homes in Danville. Means your properties are appreciated, but it's bad from a tax rate respect. Cause we're trying, the state's trying to adjust. Those values in calculating, um, what your fair share needs to be towards. Schools education. So, um. That came in and I wanna go right to the fact that, how did, how did I combat that influence? I did two things. Um, you guys hopefully remember the reserve, we jumped in, the reserve calculations that we had, right? A cer- a certain amount of unrestricted funds, yeah, let me blow this up. So we're not going wide. Anyway, we have four different sets of funds, someone did have some. Now, unrestricted surplus was around a half a million dollars, a little over half. We had a capital fund, about twenty eight thousand, we also had an ending mission and vision reserve restricted for forty five. And we also, another restricted reserve, uh, special education for one year. So, I said, Jesus, you know, I'm, let's put together a path that helps combat. A negative C L A, which is impacting your tax rate. And I said, we have over two hundred thousand dollar increase in special education costs in the previous. The reserve is there, let's use it, let's use it to combat a good chunk of that special education. Then I also said, let's use a portion, right around. Of three hundred thousand. Of the five thirteen. To combat that. C L A debt, by doing that. It brought. Tax rate to a dollar forty two, which is, yes, up from the previous year. Of twenty three by four cents, but actually. Um, four cents, sorry, but actually lower than fiscal twenty two, which was at one forty six. Someone's gonna pause. Stop talking. Open up the floor for any questions. Just on that subject then.
So weren't there years we voted on last year, not what was actually, that was born, I just double check your question, good question.
Voter approved. Sorry, no, that's a very good question. But it's just, yeah, no, it's good clarity, so this is really important, let me blow this page up. Um, voter approved was, it shows flat, absolutely flat, but, um, at a previous basketball meeting. I was told that. You have to show vote. Can't just show what was voted on, you have to show what the actual was, now the actual was less, it was the doll thirty eight here, you can see that. But that's because at the eleventh hour, the yield rate set by the state. Went up, that's always a good thing, just like it went up on the last year, from thirteen, three, fourteen to fifteen, four, seventy nine, that had a positive impact. Of twelve cents combating, uh, the spending increase year over year. Of twelve cents combating uh the spending increase year over year, as well as that C L A adjustment. It's helping reduce, so, good question, it's flat compared to the voter group as a rate. But it's up by four cents.
Right, so when we talk, when we, when we mention to the voters, we have, this is a bunch of powerful. This is not a bunch of flat, this is a bunch of powerful.
It is, but I really love this chart, I don't wanna. I've been talking out of getting rid of, I wanna be transparent, so people know, you voted on the dollar forty two, okay, wanna make sure.
Okay, so can we first talk about the yield? Yield is up because the state emptied their coffers. That's the way I understand it, that's why. Okay.
I wouldn't quite, it's it's closing concept, but under statute. The state can only retain five percent surplus in education. So the education fund is continued for a couple of years running.
Sixty three million this year?
That sounds right, right, so they hit that's, so that sixty three million was all about. What the five percent statutory limit gives on what they can retain, and so they're required by statute to plow excess above that. Back to the taxpayers, and their vehicle for doing that is to adjust the yield, so that's where the increase in the yield rate came. So, yeah, it's. And that will continue to, and that would happen in any year where there would be surplus. What's actually?
How many times in the last twenty years?
Um, the last twenty years, I would have been doing this. It's, uh, they ran, I know the previous year, they've, they've been running surpluses in the education fund. Since the state switched the uh the seeds into the education fund. Three years ago, or maybe four years ago now. The legislature changed, they allocated, took a hundred percent of the proteins themselves to use tax. Take a percentage of that, but no, that's crazy figuring that out, we're gonna dump all the sales tax revenue into the education. Pandemic hit, everybody was shopping Amazon from home, sales tax collections went through the roof, so are liquor sales, but it's another source of money for the. And a couple of lottery and things like that, and so. That's generally understood to be the reason why we've been running surpluses for two, possibly three years. Is that going to continue? I don't know, I, I mean, I hope it does, but I hope it's not. But that's why it's been running surpluses, and they're, they took a big chunk of money uh for F Y twenty three. Keep keep my this review straight, the current year that we're in. That they did to set aside for the P C B remediation, they set aside thirty two million from the surplus. Just for that, that was a big chunk of money to be luckily to be sitting on top of, it may not be to deal with the problem, but it's nice to have it. So we'll, we'll just have to see on a year to year basis if that's, if that's gonna continue. Honestly, we'll have to see on a year, by year basis, if the legislature decides to fool around with the funding sources. That was a timely gift, I would say, to the school districts to free direct sales tax or evidence, just some time to. Let it off during the pandemic, but nobody planned that. But I can't go back.
It's probably not all that common, every, every year.
Um, no, it's, it, by statute, it can't run a deficit. And there, I think, once, one year that I can remember, they actually somehow ended up with a deficit that they had to raise additional. Remnants to cover the deficit, deficit and get up to the five percent threshold, and that had a, a big impact.
All right, so I have questions. With the special education fund that we have, there's a hundred and eighty thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars in it right now, if we run this budget through, and there's zero. But what do we do next year? Where else, where's, where is our emergency fund, we take it all the way to shore, that's my first question, it is pretty much rhetorical. My second question is, we have a, an overall budget surplus of five hundred and twelve thousand, if you take three hundred thousand of that and make it disappear, now it's half. What do we do if we have an emergency? And now it's not as. This is, th- th- this is where, so the, 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 the budget worth is that has occurred to keep this at a dollar forty two. And acquisitions is, um, it's a, it's a lot of gymnastics, but burning through our, we're, we're throwing fuel on the fire that. And it makes us less prepared for um the fiscal cliff, which. I, I think that we don't think the fiscal cliff is this year because of how much the yield is.
Your side depends on how you define fiscal.
It also depends on how you define an emergency, and so I wanna talk about both.
So I think your second part question is fully valid. That would have a significant effect, it'd be more than that.
Yeah.
That's, that's only a fund you don't wanna drain too much because it's the only unrestricted funds. So if they're looking to offset special education costs, the first place to look at is that special education reserve. Unless you go back to the voters and ask them to change the structure of that fund, that would make the voter.
That was a question I had, are there pol- there are policies around each one of these funds?
This was a, a fund that was voted on, a specially designated fund, a restricted fund, it was, I think it was two thousand eighteen. Is that sound right, or was it seventeen? Seventeen, okay. I was at town meeting, I think it was, I remember the discussion, I think it was raised by law. At the time, because something triggered it, and there was money, there was extra, there was extra money laying around, it had to move money from. Unrestricted to this fund and to the, what's the other one? So with those two funds, I don't.
So I figured if we're gonna touch, this would be the year, that's it. But this can only be you, especially. So that's why I said, second matter of your question, I would agree a hundred percent. It was just an idea, remove the idea of nobody like, I just thought the special education reserve has been in existence for a long time. For a moment, just like this.
Are there certain um restrictions where are we on money, kind of amount of money that needs to be in the, at all, or? Okay, there's no policy, it says you have to have X amount.
One minimum, we set the rules for that.
To be used for this curse, that is much as well, ten thousand, hundred thousand, or all.
So if you use all the specialized, there'd be no specialized fund to, to put money back in.
Well, that's such as, so, so we could vote at a later time, do exactly what happened six years ago. Which is if we get a lot of surplus, we can vote on them, right?
There you go. So. I don't, I'll have to check on this, but I think now that the funding exists, the school board may have the authority to transfer unrestricted funds into this other.
Yeah.
On its own, I think, I just, I don't wanna, you know. I wanna sort of that, but I will look into that and see. That sounds right to you too, yeah.
I would think since we govern, ownership of funds and we don't like this other.
But you vote to retain surplus money.
But if something were major with the building or to crap out over the next, like this unrestricted fund is where we go to.
Plus one, that's one, the other one is the actual, I think it's twenty seven, six, seventy, as part of the good shop, uh, very small. Okay.
No, no.
We have a little bit more than that, that's what, the capital fund is the, the building. But the, but since the special education was created, we haven't touched it. Okay.
There was a co-principal uh with uh Ms. Hoffman, I forget his name.
Ed Lovelace. Something Ari.
Mr. Renner.
That's something along those lines.
Right, yeah. He gave a fantastic presentation on that, all of his work and stuff, and. That just.
Is that for strategic planning and making sure that you're.
It was, it was, um. If a, a special project wanted to be done. That a student would present it to a mentor, a mentor would present it to a committee. Um, with Mr. Rector on it, they would approve this, bring it to the board, we would like five thousand dollars to do this project.
Yes, yes, kind of, yeah, yes. And it, and it, it has a very specific process for how to define.
And we set that process. That the, that it was students are back.
Yeah.
The idea that supports submission visions. That idea would, that would be the border. It wasn't student specific. Okay. The, the log's very short with that, with Jeremy, got this idea of where he got it from. But Jeremy learned about it, so he had the idea. Sort of sets money aside, have it be like dream big, but. Uh, and that's what it was, there was a lot of, we used it once for.
Right.
And then it's always sort of, we honestly never had a good.
They were supposed to have you some of it for um the equity committee, I was gonna face back into the equity thing, but that never materialized.
We did, we talked about, wait, the equity committee or the?
The teacher, either one.
The teacher, which. We talked about that when we didn't have.
Could it be used for staff development, staff come together and said. This addresses the issue of the school. Or some fix in the building, if this, people come together and say it's broken, so it could be used in that way.
Maybe not for physical repairs, but for.
I think it was sort of created as a, here's a great. Sometimes you get these teachers or you get these students who are motivated for change, and they wanna create change. And if you don't access those students and those teachers, like, how can you lose them? It's a weight of fiscal year, the budget and what their dream is, right, you would lose. And you lose them to other places that are gonna support that, and so in my mind, when we created that, that sort of, we were supporting that idea. We also have the surplus at the time, that we're like, yeah, no brainer. Thinking that, you know, in the hopes that we would have that, those types of people coming through, who also knew this was here. Uh, and actively in that, but it, it really is, I, I think a great, a good way to. You have to tie it back to schools, mission efficient, and have that purpose that's gonna support more than just something you want.
I think if you just something like. The effect of. How that comes ready and how that's. It was always a little tricky to sort of figure out. Who sort of led the charge. Stewards of that fund.
The Danville Works students wanted to keep the Danville Works program going, that would be an example of using that fund.
Um, it would be, but that's, I, I don't think we ever intended for like supporting things that are. Something we're not doing now.
And if we wanted to devolve it, it would have to be approved at.
It was approved, right, the reserve was approved for that.
To make in the canyon for.
I believe so.
It's, it's accessible, but.
Right.
If somebody had, if somebody had something that, 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 that vision or the vision or some sort of idea, they don't ask us very much. Depending on how, if, the procedure for getting to this table is that. So it's accessible money, but it's not accessible money for budget. Okay.
So you wanna see some? So, might play with the numbers?
So here is what I don't like. And I'll talk to you about this earlier, I don't like hanging on to that dollar forty two so much that you burn through your reserves. I don't like, I don't like spending more than a dollar forty two, but if you wanna show the voters. How much this costs, and you wanna increase things to this degree, they need to know how much this actually costs. Not that we can sit here and use up all of our reserve to bring you back to all. And so, so, and you're gonna bring it to us live, and you're gonna show me what it looks like, when that three hundred thousand becomes zero. As big as that impact is gonna be, I gotta see it. So it's forty five thou- it's forty five, it's gonna be eight cents, forty five thousand.
How much was from? And there's another from endowment, that's another piece we can talk about too, that.
All right, so.
What's pressing my endowment?
Doesn't have to be endowments, no. So, you know, doesn't, but there's a reserve page, I'll protect, blown up on the screen, that's that five thirteen unrestricted surplus from previous year. Yeah, that's right there, so that's where it's coming from, yeah, you got it, that's it, so I was taking the three hundred from that five thirteen, but now. I've been asked to remove it, I have, I won't, do you think it's gonna go up?
We can't see a term to say yet.
Also, so this is why I have a footnote, we'll just show where I took it, it lived on the revenue page in this lovely cell block here. And I removed it, I left the one eighty. Where are we at? We are at one forty nine, it, it went up seven cents. That's step one.
Step one, okay, so the other thing, if you, if you wanna talk about this a lot or?
This is, this is what I've been, this is what I'm actually being asked, right?
The other thing that Larry, Derek and I talked about today, that we kind of realized together is. I'm not gonna use names, I'm not gonna get too specific about positions, but there's a retirement, we recently learned about. The teacher who is slightly funded by title. And we can move one of the teachers that was, was extra funded, but was put into the local budget. Under that title funding. And that was about a hundred and, call it a hundred thousand dollars. So you can show the effect, and that's our total confidence. And instead of was S R, got moved into local budget, now we can move it to be covered under title one funding, because that has.
And we don't need to replace that.
We don't need to replace that position. So to show them.
Yeah. Why not?
Why not? Because. Um.
Yeah.
We're not gonna replace that teacher entirely, because there's a part-time, you still have a part-time extra funding. You know, interventionist. It's not showing up in your life. Somebody that shared with.
Take it by the S. At the S level, using. So, uh, what does that do? Well, it drops back down to one forty-six, which would be parallel to what was happening in two thousand. It was flat from twenty-two and it just rolls up. Hopefully everybody can see. One forty-six, so it brought it back down. Looking better already.
Yeah. Yeah, but.
Okay. Questions? From the board?
The equalized pupil rate is set, like even if, say, a lot of kids left Danville this year.
Once they set, once they set the rate, the rate is set. Now, we got an email this afternoon, which is four hundred this afternoon. From the agency saying that I could release the final numbers on Friday. You know, we're not anticipating, but. You know, we're not in the decision, I don't think we have to be in the decision point. Well, reflects in the next draft, you know, you gotta, you gotta tell us, this is where you wanna be. And then the next draft, well, the CLA is set, we have the, we have the. The final equalized people number, they will say this. The draft you want to go on.
From the board, I need to hear from the board.
Some voters will make their decision based upon one line. If they, if they see, what, we're up almost a million? No way. And they've made their decision and all the work that goes into this. They made the decision on one line. Other people. Will, will take a look at and say twenty-two, twenty-two thousand for excessive spending threshold. That's what the academy is. And they'll make their decision just on that one line.
On the access things, that's what I think, so the, the fair people.
But people will make their decision. Or people base upon that. They'll make their decision solely on what the local tax rate is, whether it's one forty-two, one forty-eight, one forty-six. And they'll only consider that one line without looking at, you know, all the work and stuff like that, with countless hours that you put in, i- into the budget. In, in discussion and how, how formulas work.
Yeah, right. Do you think it'd be helpful if we put the explanation to why we're up? In other words, this, this one page, I, I don't, maybe it's too much information, I, I'm just throwing it out there to say, they're gonna look at that one number. But no, well, here's the reason. At least ninety percent of people. So I don't think with what happened in the budget that everyone's had any question.
So, Dan, I think your points are all well taken, my question back to you is, how is that different? Because we, we have people that don't look at the tax rate, we have people that work in the. For beautiful cost, we have people who work at the bottom line on education spending anyway. And other than trying to, doing everything we can to educate the wider community about what's in this. Is there some, I'm just, I'm not challenging your belief, because I understand what you're saying, but is there something different, special about this year that makes that a bigger issue in your mind than that?
Absolutely. Okay. Uh, wanting new money. To, to put up a new building.
It's the perception.
Perception, exactly. It's. You gave the number of forty-two hundred dollars a year.
Okay. So what he's talking about here is he's clarifying that when, one of the meanings that we had would be tax implication of what it would cost extra. I asked if anybody wanted to give a number and nobody did, so I gave a number of five, it's gonna be on the building project of the, the, the first hundred forty-two hundred dollars extra on my particular taxes. For one of those, for the ninety, after ninety-one cents, it was.
So, and just for, for easy math, let's say, uh, their taxes is gonna go up eight hundred dollars with. Um, you know, with these new budgets, so. Five thousand dollars. For, uh, we can, we can give you a deal and you write a check for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, your taxes are paid for the next thirty, thirty years.
We've lost it.
Yeah.
Hold on, hold on. I wonder. Because. It's perception, but the forty-two hundred dollars off tape.
It's, it's a perception.
Correct. Do you think it would be helpful if the wave member would present the bill for the budget? We broke taxpayers' whole budget. The bucket that would have been forty-two hundred dollars, which would be income insurance and, and home value threshold, but then there's three others that fall under that. I, 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 I could easily present this budget to say, area of four democrats.
I don't think it would be. It's some, so wow.
Perfect.
Perfect. So a, 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 a normal conversation with the voter is, either they look at one of these members and make a decision, or they say, I heard you're up nine cents. And that's, that's, that's about all I go, I heard you're level funded, that's great, I heard you're up nine cents, that's terrible. And so it's one of those. So that, that, that's the extent of the conversation is, you know, they wanna know how much tax they're gonna pay, but they're not gonna wanna go to eat us over the tax a bit of a thing. And, and that takes as much.
Alright, I think that.
A W.
And, and I think there is some, I think there is some value in at least trying to explain that that. Nine hundred, the nine hundred fifty thousand dollars increases. How much of that is in control of the school?
I think that it's very important to, to say that building costs are up, with the building operation costs are up, special ed costs are up and we don't control those.
Okay.
Of how many costs are up and we don't control those. Staffing costs are up because we negotiate those with people that we care about, that we trust. All that is, all that is the truth. And I'm gonna have to write all that in a letter, so we'll get to the letter later, but we'll write all that in a letter, and we say to the town, we hope they read the letter. We hope they say that the costs here, the costs here, the costs here are up. And then I'm gonna have to tell them, we also wanna add more positions, because it's an emergency. Because we're in an emergent situation. And we're gonna hope that we have some thought on that. Right?
Right.
Just to be like, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna solve the point. And then we're, we're, we're gonna be going with the perception. And so it depends, does it is for wanna go into perception? I don't wanna show them the thing, this is a dollar forty-two and we burn the following service. That doesn't make any sense.
I agree.
You don't go with a dollar forty-two and say, and guess what? Everything behind us is the money that we've been saving for years. So if we go with a dollar forty-nine, and we say to the town, it's a dollar forty-nine. And this is what it is. And we need your help, we need to talk to you seven cents, because it's been in the paper that it's ten cents in this town, they're fighting, and it's eleven cents in this town, they're fighting. And it's thirteen cents in this town, and they're, they're trying to cut budgets and fire people, they push seven cents off of what we voted on last year. Will the town support that? And that's the question for the board. I think all of course.
And that's a decision. So the new numbers are.
Right, so, but I don't know that yet, because that, that, none of that's final. None of any of that's finalized, and that's the rest of this discussion here that we, we spoke about, we, that isn't finalized. All the, the, the moving of the people and the ideas. Each, right before this meeting, you said that. So I think that that's not a thing that is finalized, so I think that what we're gonna do here is, the truth is, a dollar forty-seven.
Forty-nine.
Dollar forty-nine. It's possible that we can get this to a dollar forty-six and have these interventionists that are gonna help us get these kids. Back, that we remain in rescue mode. But you can't keep these interventionists forever. That's the rest, that's the rest of it that you guys gotta remember. Can't have interventionists forever because we don't have that budget.
And we have the goal project coming in.
So, this is the question I asked you at the last meeting, I said, what is the sundown for these interventionists?
Do you make the cup decision now, next year, year after?
I think we're, I, I think that we're still in rescue mode, and I think, I think that we can say, I think that we can say, you know, we are trying to rescue these kids. These kids, like the, the specific from grade, whatever the grade, whatever that, that got lost in this, and that, and that they're lost. I think that, that, that we can say that we're trying to rescue them. And I think that that can be our position. And I think that we have, that we can say it's gonna cost a little bit more.
Sure.
But I don't think that we can say that forever we need interventions. Because we didn't have them previously.
You didn't have, so one of them.
We didn't have middle school interventionists previously, whether we needed them or not, that's a different. That's a different conversation we didn't have.
One of the other things that you and I talked about on the panel this morning is that, one. So there's a couple ways to watch it, the, you know, having intervention staff. One of them is like, if you say learning emergency situation, they need to deal with learning loss, and that is our, that's a longer term benefit, if you say. I'm not gonna sit here today and say, yeah, we could, you know, just giving one more year of intervention. The other piece of this is under Act one seventy-three, we need intervention positions to stop the pipeline from. Tier one instruction to tier three, which is some regular classroom instruction to special education, which is always more expensive and will continue to be more expensive. Than overall than dealing, than, the dealing with the problems before. Detecting them early with testing and data analysis, dealing with them as they emerge in the students in real time during the school year. And then. Kinda keeps some of those students out of special education, because what the pattern has been and what the state rebelled against, and what we think rebelled against. And Act one seventy-three was just to continue this, continuing increase in special education child count to turn for headcount. Okay? From year to year, because it was, there was this big chasm between regular classroom and special education, and the kids started to struggle. Beyond the capacity of the regular classroom, they automatically ended up in special education, it's more expensive. Okay, so I, I hear what you're saying about not wanting to commit today to some period of time, but. The intervention positions are an investment in saving special education costs. The problem is that I can't sit here today and say, if you invest two hundred thousand dollars in attentionness. I can save you three hundred thousand dollars, but I can't do that, I mean, that's not, that's.
What if, so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get back here.
Yeah.
One of the things that we also wanna talk about here tonight is revenue. Can interventionists help us keep our middle school kids from seeking high school educations elsewhere? Are they improving our middle school to that degree? And if our high school were attracted to the kids that live in town?
And I don't think that's applicable. I don't think that is so long.
In the middle school, there's people on teach them, right?
But when you think about Act. That we, like.
This is.
One seventy-three, this, this. That interventionists can provide special. It does, definitely need a very, very thing that we. People are able to do before. And so that's, it's a whole other bargain, is that also allows you to offer intervention at a different level that reach it more specifically, rather than it's like, you all. We need a MAP, so that's the, you all think of, I, that it's not for the people from the level. Really.
I think the answer might be that. But so, now, I would, the question was, you know, wouldn't interventions keep their kids? If our kids are more successful in time.
In the building.
In the building. And they're not gonna want. Where are these kids leading? Well, I don't know.
Private school.
So guess what?
I, I know, it's not gonna stop all off, well, sure, but it might be some kids who aren't successful here for the way of combination of reasons. Who, who get the right combination, right intervention, right supports, step.
Teach, teach them, give them an example of that, they've done fifty years. They have year a lot. Not all, not all of them.
So some of those kids will never, and some of those kids.
Yeah, but, you know, the pipeline for, for choice town to pipeline from the elementary school into the private town. Wait, we're not gonna, we're not gonna compare that.
But do you, Mark, is, is there a, a certain date that families need to tell you that the estimate will be going outside of Danville for high school? Is there a sort of indication that?
Yeah, no, no, they can, they can. Stand from August twenty-ninth. Or somewhere else, but if they pull them out of this school, we're not made.
Right, right. And with the average tuition rate, that eighteen thousand, whatever it is, for any tuition kid coming in, does the state ever change that?
We, it gets changed every year, there's a, I'm not gonna ask Mike to explain complex calculation. There's a spreadsheet, the, the, a set of guidelines from the, uh, from the agency for how to calculate that. And then frankly, it's been under, under calculated in past years for reasons that I don't understand, but, you know, one of the, one of the. As he came into CCFU and looked at that entire process, we were under staying. Uh, uh, annual, annual, annualized, non-annualized tuition, announced tuition. For all of our district schools, all of our S U schools.
Yeah.
Because we weren't, we were just pulling, somebody was pulling numbers out of here, so now sixteen sounds like a good amount.
Yeah.
Rather than saying, what does it really cost to run your school? Why would you not charge a tuition rate at least close to what it costs to.
That's what I'm getting at.
Educate.
Your, the discrepancy between the two is always increasing, the economies of scale of getting tuition kids changes. So if you're having twenty thousand dollars that we're paying per student, and we're only getting eighteen thousand per student. You know, and I think that when we add our capital costs at some point, that our costs are gonna increase for students, we're not getting that money in at that point either.
I know, announced tuition should really, in my opinion, should reflect what it costs to, to run your school.
Right.
And there's something called allowable tuition.
Right.
I'm not gonna get into a lot of details, but that's an important number to understand, because. When you submit your stat report, right, we all have to put what our books are at the end of the, and now it's based on an estimate. We're being asked right now to announce what your twenty-four tuition is gonna be. Once we agree on what we're gonna add for a budget. I'll give the announced tuition to the A O E and, and to all of our constituents, like residents and teach them, et cetera, all that, right? This is what it's gonna be. Allowable means, after you submit your final results from the previous year, the A O E comes back and says, hmm. You announced you, you were gonna charge nineteen, but when you roll up your results, you should have only charged eighteen. I have to refund the money back, conversely, within the margin of three percent. Conversely, if I've undercharged any resident of any town, I'm supposed to be going back and saying, hmm, I, I gave you a bargain at eighteen, it should have been nineteen. So that's.
But that's not going to the family.
That's going to, no, sorry, I'm going to the town, to the town, like that, sorry, to the school districts.
So, you know, one of the, one of the, one of the misunderstandings about the tuition rates that we set. Parents don't care, they don't, they're not gonna sit there and say, oh, I think I'll send my kid to Danville because their announced tuition rate is eighteen-five, or eighteen, you know, eighteen thousand dollars, and that's less than the announced tuition rate at Oxford.
Yeah, no, I don't think that, that's not where I'm going. Yeah, no, it's just more. liability, like school and sustainability, and what trajectory are we on with money coming in, the revenues that we have, and what we're, you know, it costs money to educate every student, whether it took their tuition or not, and.
But the reason that there's a discrepancy between announced tuition and. Cost for equalized people is that there are some costs that we are not allowed to consider in thinking about the cost of.
It's, no, no. You got me.
Okay, but I want, I.
You, you got me.
Alright. So I'm gonna ask a little bit of a question.
So, let's use easy numbers here. For twenty thousand dollars. Okay, please give me. Or, or just explain things that aren't, you aren't allowed to charge for as part of the tuition.
Transportation, we don't provide it to choice students, and so we can't rip the back like that to back that out.
I think we did pay tuition for anything. At the student meeting, we have.
Charge. In. I'll, I'll pull the.
That's a little bit of special interest.
I'll pull the.
I thought when I asked, let's see, if you were meeting about transportation from Walden, or we're driving the same day.
When we make, when we make decisions like that, we're doing that for.
So we're not paying for trans, to get students to our school.
We're not, we are not allowed to consider the cost of that in the calculation.
Right.
Then my.
Right. Because we, we provided a, um, a bus caller to bring tuition students here, and we. What was the number, we felt that we had six.
Right.
That it was paid for, anything over six. I don't remember the number, that was the number of students.
I don't remember the num- that was the number of students, and we've always just, we've been able to reprogram that bus based on. Where we're getting most people, so we no longer, we no longer send a bus to Concord.
Right. And, and the work that it does, the work that it does pay for, um, more than pays for.
The cost of transportation, if you just figure you're getting X number of students from Windenville or Concord or wherever it counts as. It justifies the expense of sending the bus.
When I asked about that eighteen thousand that we get for each tuition student. You said that the transportation, transportation cost when our Danville bus has joined the Walden and Saint Jay. That, that eighteen thousand is helping to pay for those, those transportation.
The money that we get in the tuition. But we're not, but we're not allowed to accept the enough tuition rate. We're not allowed to consider the transportation, those costs.
So hold on, here's the template. I can show the template.
Let's stop you, I wanna move on. The part I wanna move on in the budget too is the four jobs, the four jobs that we're adding. We've talked a lot about the two interventions and the value of interventions. Tell me about the other jobs. Why do we need to add, uh, why do we need to add special ed para and why do we need to add? A parent's a day's program.
I can talk about that one. You are, um, the connector room is always designed to run with teacher and assistant. That position was funded on. So that's not, so I wanna, I wanna correct that.
So this is, this is a grant funded position also that's coming off of grant funding, and it's the person who's in the second bus that we are already paying.
Second van.
Second van, sorry, we're already paying.
We don't have anybody.
We have never actually paid for that. Um, the first year we didn't have somebody. We're in a band, so we couldn't get. This year, we have had somebody in that position, but that person has been with a student, a specialized student throughout the day and that specialized. But it's all, it's actually happened.
Haven't had that.
Had that money. I don't know when, but.
Regarding the special ed para, that's, that can happen at any time. Either additional para is factored into the special education cost. It is rolled into that two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We're just reflecting.
You have it, you anticipate that you're definitely needing this actual special ed para.
Yeah, so that could happen, that could happen multiple times.
It's not a special ed para, so, so there's, so, so there's four positions listed there, right? There's, there's ELA intervention, that. Those are, those are exactly that. Career, technical, uh, and experiential para positions that they just spoke about. Where it says parent educator dash S E S and that element, we, we meant to correct that to be middle school and high school. What that position is. Right, right. It's the, it's the support staff, the, the support section, the student support center. So, um. We've had one person in this position for many years, then we realized. That that position needed in, in thirteen grades would be very, very, needed more than one person for three years. So this is to allow us to have two support center staff, but there are seven. I think it is technically private educator and S E S.
I would do.
Social emotional support, and it's just middle school, high school.
So a support has three people, is that correct?
There's a total of.
One for high school, two for.
There's a total of four. There's two for the pre- stage and six. And there's this year two for grade seven.
Last, last year, last fall, that, that position was added. That's where it's probably last fall.
And so this position also is another position that was funded by grants. This is a behavior, this is somebody who will behave as.
Behavior and social.
So all four of these potentially were funded by a grant and now are not. Yeah, that's a good idea.
It's a new position.
But simply four people who are new here whose grants have run out, or four positions that are already here whose grants have run out.
I wanna be clear, I wanna, this is really, this is mixing words and I wanna make sure that I'm clear. It was approved to be spent under the grant, agreed, but all position never filled. But, but it wasn't filled, so as a result, it wasn't, grant funds were not used to pay for it last year. Right. That's why I'm calling it a new position because we're using local money to, to fund this position because there is no more money in that than like this.
I, so I think instead of a position, I think they should say, I'm self positioned from that point.
Yeah, that's fine. I'd rather you say that than say.
This would be fully sustainable and for a year.
I mean.
Wait, 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 hold on. What, what's your next question here? What, what?
Uh, the grant that we're receiving is for how many years?
That's the next, that's our next topic about revenues, but I don't know if you wanna, you wanna talk about that now? Tell me about the revenues that we can generate from Dave's book. Either you or Dave can tell me, and we, so one of the things that we wanna talk about, I mean, we wanna talk about is. To be more sustainable, we need to bring in more tuition kids. Even despite what we spent last year doing, and one of the reasons that we all agree with Dave's program, that we want to support it and the people to support it. And the last one fully supports it, and I think this one fully supports it, is because we can find children in the other town. Who could benefit from hands-on learning where there isn't any in grade seven, eight, nine, and ten.
That's exactly right. So there are students just like, we have, uh, Danville residents, students who do not. Who learn better and experience. There are students in other, in Saint John Ferry and in the East Districts. That have the same need and would benefit in the same way from that kind of structure, and there is no other program like that. Off the, King of East about how high school, neither does Saint John Ferry Council, okay? So, these are, we're talking about, uh. In, inviting kids in from other districts that can benefit from that kind of a learning.
And we also talked about it as a retention.
I think we are.
It's actually, it's actually a big piece of visiting all the. So yeah, the goal was to change the culture of conversation.
So, so today we've had some conversations with. He has kids in her district that are, are in the lean right now, that are not sold in the school, but they can't find. Blurring environment that, that needs. We have a possibility and we're gonna continue discussion next week and bring some of those kids in here. Uh, and then we're working.
Can we put them though? I guess that's where I'm trying to make the number.
The shop, like the only place, the shop in the year, that's the only place in this building that's space. Somebody's gonna have a shop this summer. The shop has space.
So here, so the question is, the question can used to be about what's going to happen. Tonight, we're gonna talk about a new staff. You have seven, eight has been a piece of.
Just to clarify, we're gonna talk about a staff, we're gonna be hired in a budget.
Change the test. So anyways, back up to answer this question. As that, and, and, and that role takes hold, that person becomes globally funded design tech teacher since you've always had. That gives us more room to expand alternative programs, that gives me more room to focus on middle school, and it gives us more, yes, we. People who do a true alternative program. Outside of the, the schedule that is a morning and afternoon cohort, uh, ten students. Um, shop will become the next space that'll be. You know, we, we, we've got a year.
But they have to be enrolled in a different program, so apparently that everybody can fit with that too.
Right, will make everybody fit, and some people would cycle back into afternoon classes. It's a half day to cohort program. Then yes, there's different. There's, you know, it's a juggling act and I don't wanna say, we have a finance base because we're not, but yes, we can accommodate more students and make it work.
The money coming in from those students, but it costs money, it's not free money, you know, it's kinda costly to educate traditionally as well, so it's the. The money coming in, I guess the numbers, I'm trying to figure out where for your, for that program to make it sustainable, how much more money to come in.
So the, just, just to clarify, the positions in Danville works all except for Mr. Shillings are already in the budget.
Right.
The Danville connect, the Danville connect is in the budget, is that correct?
I don't.
Likewise.
Tech ed teacher for sure is in the budget. Program assistant, we are hoping will be.
So, if I can try to answer Molly's question, if that's all right, so. Tuition students didn't exist, and just pretend that's not even an issue. We have students in the school that benefit from that. So I think that my, my, there's our feeling is that we have a, we have a, a legal and a moral obligation. To meet the needs of our students where they are, okay? So some subset of our students need that kind of structure. We, we would need to spend money to provide that kind of structure, some money, spend that kind of structure. Now you look outside of the, the bounds of this building, outside the bounds of this community, and there are other students. Who can also benefit from that. Those students come with eighteen thousand dollars in the back pocket.
That's where I'm getting to that because that to me is like too much, very much money that in terms.
Doesn't, that's two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars.
When we're talking about adding on to this, the pupil cost with a, with a capital project. At that point, we're not gonna, I'm saying, at some point, I'm guessing we're gonna have a capital project. And, and, and we'll have more money that we're spending for people with that, that we're not getting from tuition students. So I'm just trying to understand financially.
Capital costs, let's say the town passed the bond tomorrow, okay? The cost of that bond is not factored into your cost. It doesn't, it doesn't raise the cost for equalized people.
But we're still paying for it as.
We're paying for it as taxpayer.
Right.
The point I'm trying to make is that, is we are, if we're committed to meeting the needs of our Danville students, which. We have an obligation to do, this is an opportunity to bring in additional revenue from others. From other towns that are just gonna write us a check for kids, come in here and benefit, and anytime you ask students like that. You're increasing the revenue. That's what happens today. The tuition students that we take in today. Uh, the numbers fell off a little bit this year, but we were bringing in, what was the number? Close to eight hundred thousand dollars?
That was the high end of it.
The high end, we were bringing in as much as eight hundred thousand dollars tuition from choice students from other communities. There was a revenue item that, that you know, the town never paid any taxes on that. If those kids weren't here.
Right, right.
Right.
Yeah, no, I get that, and it is an economy of scale, we can actually serve our kids better because we have more students here.
Right.
But I'm just struggling with that discrepancy of. The rate that, the, the, the tuition costs that we're talking about for equalized pupils and the amount that we're getting. And then the amount we're going to pay for a capital project, that's where I'm, it would cost money to educate these kids that are coming in with lots of money, so it's. You know, it's, it already seems like it's a small amount.
That's, that's how I tend to explain it because that person who comes in with their eighteen thousand dollars in the back pocket to learn here, sits down in a seat that would otherwise be them. And they sit down and they diversify our room, even just a room. And they fill in our sports pools and they do whatever they add to the, they add to the culture.
Yeah, no, I get the benefit for sure.
And so, but I, we, we can't, we can't then make them pay for a bill. That's, that's where you're hung up.
Sustainability, you know, financial viability.
The one that we gave to everybody.
This is a different thing. Okay, and I think that's, um.
What secondary?
I think that's.
Eighteen. Eighteen seventeen, but I probably took that round to eighteen thousand. But this year, if we would have, if we would have passed this budget as presented right now with the qualifications we just made tonight, just to be clear, it would be, I would be presenting. I'm suggesting a number that looks more like twenty-one thousand or one thousand four hundred. Uh, yeah, I mean, why, why would we not charge tuition to other districts? If our cost to educate is twenty-one four hundred, why would I not?
We're not really allowed.
Where we're at and it's frustrating and unfortunate, it's just, I don't really have a path forward, so we're not predictive, you know?
And we're looking at just tuition numbers, uh, we're looking at between thirteen and fifteen tuition students paying. The salaries as proposed for the community-based learning program and my salary. My salary is not, you know, that, this is, that's a future discussion because that's not something that we, the goal was to get this thing up. Whether or not that's something that is monitored budget, is something, you know, that doesn't. Um, and it's, it's very well, it's very well made, but my position is not, as I intended it or not, um, or funded. These are all things that you have, but with the program as it stands.
Covering all the costs.
Covering the costs completely. I'm not even talking about my costs today. It's the sustainability question.
If you're saying we could pull twenty.
I'm saying we can pull twenty.
So then there's revenue gains.
Right, to, to get up to that point.
But David, that's a full, taking the full eighteen for each student for your program and not applying any eighteen to personal learning.
I'm just talking about what eighteen, about what. If, if you ask how many tuition students fully fund the program.
Okay.
And yes, there needs to be.
Correct.
Thirteen, fifteen, eighteen, thirteen, sorry. Um, so, right, that's, and, and that, and that's a discussion we have next year too, about the whole system of budget. Um, the question about sustainability right now is a big one, but the answer is without the tuition students, high school, even back all of my stuff, that pretend I never existed. You still couldn't, you still couldn't find the high school at its current level without the tuition. That's.
And that's the part, that's the part that's scary to me is that. All of the D O D of not knowing, it's always going to be, you know, how many is coming in, where are going out, and I think that's the part where. We now have the capital project, moving on to that adds to that stress. Um, that's where that's coming from for me.
I think that, you know, and I've heard this, I've talked to people in community, this, you know, about the, the capital project. I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know, first of all, I don't know what, if that's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen. But that can't be a reason for us not to meet the needs of the students. Yeah, and like it or not, Danville is the only. And like it or not, Danville is the only school in the region that is in a position to offer that kind of experiential learning. Because the, the academies are not going to do it. They're just, they're not, they don't believe in it, they're not going to do it. They, it doesn't, they have a different perspective than the mission on that. It's not a shot at them, it's just a different perspective, okay? So. You know, if this, if these programs aren't here, if this high school isn't here, I don't know what happens to, not only, not only to those students, but to some of our candidates. You know, and I think what, you know, our, our encouragement, what we continue to focus on is what's right in front of us. On your, your basis and we know what the needs are, you know that, and I haven't even, by the way, I haven't even talked to St. John's very seriously about, uh, about what they're seeing in terms of, of kids. On the town school there, that's the exact same problem. Okay, so those are the two, two big choice districts that's next door to us and they're, and Karen Conroy is saying the same thing conversationally. The general box is doing, it's pushing a little more. Not a bad way to push it forcefully, but I, I have some real numbers, I have, I can talk about real bits. St. John's first up there.
Do we have something that we can present to students at wherever you're, or the recruit, we are recruiting everywhere? This is our program, a nice, a nice handout that they can.
We have a book. We both, it's very current. Slideshow is even more. Presented that, Mr. Fisher, Senator Fisher. Kigley's High School Fair, St. John'sburg School.
We have a book for the next meeting.
I can grab that later, I need my office and the, all the cabinets. Yeah, so we have, they're pretty nuts.
Very good.
Okay, so what can we charge for tuition?
This is my, my. I just, so, 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 this, this change. The process of my attention, so by doing these few adjustments that we just did. I worked back and I looked, what did I, what did I build, my revenue model up? You go to the revenue page. Everyone's got the revenue page, that's.
Put it up on the screen, you have, you have a couple of people.
Please, yes. So when I, when I build this bad boy, right? I have to assume how many kids and what my tuition rate is going to be. And I used only a seven fifty increase from last year. This original number showed eighteen seven fifty home transfer credits at forty kids. That's how I get to seven hundred and fifty thousand in tuition revenue. But now that we've shaken out this budget, I can, and this was pretty close to what we, we think we're going to present to the town to vote on. Why would I not use a rate that's more in line with what it costs to educate? So with the changes that you've asked me to make so far, the cost per student on this page. Hold on, I gotta, I gotta go back, sorry, this is, everything's live, so hold on.
So this is Molly's question, if we say it costs twenty one thousand to educate a kid.
Yep.
We can build sending him twenty one thousand dollars.
And that's what.
We are bound to build them eighteen, eighteen.
No, I don't, I don't think that's true. I don't think that's true either. No, we can't charge.
Oh, yeah, we have a backup, certain things.
We have a backup, certain costs that are equitable to having students.
Correct.
So.
So I, unless we're going to set up full busing service, all the communities, since school, you need a van, I don't think you can do it.
So I think that's why I wanted to do, I, I didn't know the number that you could.
So twenty one four hundred is where it is right now, I don't make any adjustments, that's what it costs to educate a kid. With the adjustments you told me to make today, not touching tuition rates for allowable tuition, it's twenty one four hundred. We can charge something greater than eighteen seven fifty. I just don't have the exact number yet because we haven't finalized the budget, but I could put in twenty thousand or twenty one thousand five hundred. As we're reducing those transportation of our costs and get it, and it will help the tax thing, my whole point.
Yeah, we can, we can look at that for next, all right. So. Where we are right now is, we have an explanation of the board positions that are being added. We have an explanation, we have some clarification on why we're using the special ed money. All we can use it for, our situation is dire there. We are taking back these three hundred dollars in extra budgetary spending from our reserves. And we put it into cents on the budget to show the town.
Yes.
And we're at a stopping point, although we have another thing that might come up where if you get the question answered correctly, with the teaching staff and you might have somebody retiring. And it's possible that that money can move around, this number could be both.
We do have somebody retiring.
We do, don't know. The, the people will say, yes, they're moving to the town. And it, and that we can make these changes and we can go. And so, and right now we're at about one forty nine, potentially one forty six. Those are the numbers that we're going to stew on until we start our next meeting.
Right.
We're not going to act on this. Well, we can't because this number changes, this number changes. So we can clean up some of these numbers and figure out, and I think that one of those numbers was the equal, the finalized equalized pupil number is still not here.
Friday.
Today, we're meeting Friday. And so we're, we're going to be setting a meeting here pretty quick. With everybody to take a look at these numbers again, but we're going to get another quarter, take another crack at this budget and it's going to be a lot more, um. We are looking at, we're using our resources. Because I, I think that's what we are and what I'd like to do now, Ken, is move on. Does anybody have any reason we shouldn't move on, you know, to talk about this anymore? All right, moving on. And what I'm going to move on to now is, this is going to be a simple one and this is good. This is regional high school choice for the school year of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four. And you want to tell them anything to tell them?
I can cover it if you want.
Go quick.
So we participate in this program and Danville participated through here. Uh, it's a, it's a statewide program, it's, it's revenue and expense neutral. It allows kids to apply to, uh, starting for grades nineteen through twelve. They, they can apply in eighth grade to start their third year at another public high school. Anywhere, technically anywhere in the state, the Tennessee regional. Um, you've got, uh, you have students here at Danville right now that are over here. Yeah. Abbott does not give us any money from that, yeah. But so far, no students are, no students from Danville have asked for these.
Great years.
Uh, not.
Uh, more trouble.
Accepted students, what happens is if a student, uh, puts into the lottery and gets, chooses to come here and gets accepted because they've met the lottery threshold. Then they get to stay until they graduate. Can't put them out, see, so they're, uh, they're, you take, you're called continuing students if they graduate or until, they can't opt out, say, no, it's that. Otherwise they're here, so. Danville's traditionally set the threshold of five incoming students, five outgoing students. Uh, that's a little under what the maximum numbers could be, but I don't recommend. They're a continuity, uh, Danville, Cleveland, three, ten, ten, but. In five, I counted, I counted. Um, I think five, five words to Danville. Recommending to the board that you approve participation for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Uh, uh. And if you're amenable to that, I would also recommend that most of the people operate at its time. For months, they have to.
So does everybody understand what's happening with this? Any questions and questions for the public on this before I go, put some action?
I may think.
All right, so making the motion, Ken, what's your motion?
Make the motion, that's. Big original high school choice. For the school year, twenty three, twenty four, and that part.
The five incoming, five outgoing. And then Mr. Tucker is allowed to sign the form on our behalf. I got a second on that.
Sure.
Thank you, sir. Any more, any questions again, one last time. Anybody, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion there. Knock one out, guys. All right. Now the next one's. All right, and the next one's from me, this is, um, just a, just a quick one, I could do this on my own, but I'd like to teach you guys a part on. What we're going to do next Thursday for the new building, um, committee agenda. So. I was, um.
The eleven.
Wednesday, the eleven.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the eleven.
Yeah.
Whatever day the eleven says is the day that it's happening. And so on the eleventh, we're going to have a committee, I forwarded to a couple of people that were going to, they were going to come in and they said, put me on the committee. And I said, come to the meeting, to vote to those people, because I don't think we're putting people on the committee meetings, it's a thing of the board. So do you guys want, if somebody shows up to those committee meetings, says, I want to be on the committee? To add their nominee to the advisory? Would still exist in some capacity? Is that a place to put these names because they can't be on the committee because the key is the committee of the board, that's my first question. And I'm more. Um, my second question is, do you have agenda items for the first meeting? Or do you think this is going to be a free for all slash airing the free doses?
I don't think you can.
I don't think you can. My next question was, Molly knows a moderator. That, that might come at some small cost that might help us moderate these meetings and sort of keep our focus rather than have to constantly defend. What's going on and keep order? Do you want to look into the possibility going forward of using a moderator at these meetings?
Yes.
More of a facilitator, so somebody to help the board to think about the conversation, a plan, door, and.
Do you want that person for first meeting? Do you want Molly to chat with that person so that she's there for first?
I haven't checked with the person.
So there's a number of questions. All right. Is that something, is that something? So if you can't get that person for first meeting, we don't really want it to be soon to be free for all. Um, I'm going to talk to Rob tomorrow, Rob Valve, he may have some information, so I'll for what, what it's planned on, I want you guys all up that. Um, do you want at the first meeting to include the condition of the HVAC system and ERU units? Because it seems like, and then how subsequently, how the condition of ERU units and their need affects the condition of the roof? And how the condition of the roof and ERU units ties back into the definition of the electrical system, right off the bat.
Yeah.
Because I think that is a pressing concern, that you can't do one without the other without triggering the, the fix.
And, and all, all three or four of those, depending on how you count, are in scope for the USPL brand. That will be part of the concept water, that hopefully they'll, so you have to be satisfied.
Okay, so can I ask the principal there to have something put together with the facilities director if we could? And make sure facilities director can be at the meetings and talk about the energy recovery units and. Yeah, it's more. I just, so much. For approved. I don't need to have necessarily bothered enough, I know, I, I mean, I just need to be known that, that the energy recovery units are pressing. Yes, and that the roof then becomes pressing because of their energy recovery units to replace, could be helped by the roof currently. And then the spring that gets put on the electrical system in the thirty seven building. It, it may not hold enough power to not kill itself with the new energy recovery. And how that. It's, it's, so this is the, the situation that we're in is, that, that it doesn't matter that we want, that, that, that we're, we're taking a new tactic, the situation remains the same. That's what I would like to just, just make there. So I can work on a agenda for that. What do you guys think about setting up a separate committee group, rather than the advisory group? Or do you want to add community members who want to be involved to the advisory?
You mean it's the committee, the new committee?
The new committee is a board committee, it can only contain board members.
You want to do a new, another advisory group?
No, I, I don't know what to do with people that walk into the building and say, I want to be on this thing, because I can't.
So, so we have people that are on the advisory group that want to return and continue to work. We also have seats that are vacant and, um. It'd be nice if, if those people came back, but if they don't come back, they fill in with somebody that's interested in participating.
Whether they do or don't, do, do we think the advisory group can accept new members? And we think that the appellation, you are a member of the Danville and Advisory Group, is enough for people that, that, that want to sit with the committee.
That's up to the group. That's how we left it before.
Up to the advisory group?
Yeah, we left it up to people, whether they want to come back. Here, when we're in Clayton, if we're opening up, we'll subcommittee up to others.
I know that we're opening up, our members are going to welcome in, but, but, community members, but we can't put them on the committee.
Okay.
Because it's a committee of the board.
Do they think that they can?
I don't know what they think.
I think that a lot of people don't like that.
Yeah, that was, sorry.
Please, please, I, I'd love you to turn.
It was my impression that it was the sort of, the idea was that the committee would be the board plus whoever, who was coming back. It is news to me that the, yeah, the advisory group is essentially, yeah, essentially considered disbanded. So in that case, like, that's fine. But, I mean, that's, that's what you want to do, but that, that is not what.
So this is what we're talking about, this is, this is all that we're talking about, I'm sort of holding this up to everybody. Can community members get on this committee and get a vote?
Yes.
No, we are the ones, because it's a subcommittee of the board, we're the only, only board members, four of the board members can vote.
So if you put somebody in the committee and they're not one member of the committee.
Right, they're getting feedback, essentially, brainstorming.
Well, that's why. That wasn't clear to me, yeah, I, I, I apologize, I thought, I thought it was there. Well, I thought because we have the whole board that it was. But, so, so in effect then, I mean, there is. I mean, at that point, you're worried about semantics, uh, and this is, this is more just a continuation of the, of the board, students.
Right, right, it becomes, do you want to sit at this table or do you want to sit back there? But your role is the same.
Okay.
I wonder, one way to look at this is that you have the board, so I'll be. Three, four, we've got to have at least three of them. Three, four or five board members here. And you've got other people in the community that are weighing in with advice. Hopefully not revisiting going back to day one, thirty nine years. But when it comes time to make a formal decision, those non-board members do not, cannot vote. But they can advise, they can, and they can influence and they can help the guy that directs them or the decision maker of the board. At the end, just like now, we have members in public and authoritative chair, but when you're taking action, they don't get to read it.
That was my understanding, that was my understanding of the structure reform where they're part of the committee, they're on it. But when it comes down to a vote, like they're at the table, we're talking, but it comes down to a vote, only the board members legally can vote.
To make, to make the decision, but, but let's say you have ten, uh, ten, um, community members. And you've got nine out of ten say, we want to do this. That needs to hold a lot of weight when the board members say.
Right.
But at the end of the day, you're not bound that.
No, we're not bound, but.
But you're going to listen to the people that are just.
Other than you have to live here. Right, sorry to, I just want to call this a separate committee, this is, this is just a specialized board. Like this is. I mean, that's what it is, I mean, we, we, the public are sort of welcome as we're welcome here. You're not part of the board, I'm still, we're running my mouth, so. You know, um, I'm happy to have that, but yeah, I would not, I would not, uh, advertise that as a, as a separate committee that is considering this. This is, this is the school board on a very focused, uh, uh, project. I mean, I'm happy to continue to come and, I mean, more.
We're back in the same thing, it was very common.
I, I believe, my, my understanding, I'm wrong, you can have a subcommittee of a board with its structure and have community members join that committee. Although the voting is the way it is with the forum of the board members, you could, you could still have a committee. That is a subcommittee of the board and allow community members to be part of that group, is my understanding.
Correct.
Am I right about that?
But they can't vote.
But they can't vote.
And so this goes all the way back to when we got our first bit of Legally Buckles.
It's like, what's, what's the difference?
So we want to make people feel restricted and we want to not go back to square one every time with the same ballot. But they can't vote.
We, we don't want, we don't want, uh, twenty professionals feel like we're micromanaging because we're, you know, we will only accept this answer, you know? You have to, you know, there's some fantastic people with fantastic ideas and maybe option one, two, or three, maybe there's something better. But I, I don't know.
Okay.
But I guess my my point is like, I don't I don't understand the difference that will be between Wednesday and today for me and this chair. Uh, that said, I'm also happy to consult in. Obviously. But um. Yeah, I I I just, I don't understand the. Really that that distinction, that difference. And so I think that might be. If that relates to people. Yeah, it it's just, I know that if like you tell all the truth, oh, yeah, you're on the committee. Um, but you have no decision-making power of what we're actually gonna recommend. That it just. Okay, great, but I mean, I can come and voice my opinion. I I feel like getting a, you know, a little a little name tag star sticker.
This will kind of face this one. What do you think about that? All right, so. We told the advisors we can't talk about anything. But so.
Eric, can you solve this? Can you solve the concept that this is they have a role? Giving good advice to the board to the majority of this. I I attract people without people find out. I think there are very reasonable people that understand that the situation has not changed, situation has not changed. Um, that we are uh extremely educated about. The current situation and and some of the options that that be available to us. Um, and that we still need the help and I think they're still still. Very engaged and willing to to learn their expertise, but um. Yeah, so I I don't think that they will that. Those folks will necessarily run away regardless of of that. I mean, I'm. Speak for myself. I'm I'm not going to run away. It's it. To your point, there's still a problem. It still needs to be discussed. It still needs to be thought through and I'm happy to. Um, blend my perspective on that, uh, but uh, I I think that you will um. You you could, you will certainly uh uh run into some some. Uh, from from. Potentially folks that that. May not have the potential. And in giving. Bits and pieces of this um uh outside of this room. Because uh as you know, David Melissa knew from being there, those those are very long and and very. Deep thorough discussions about these these things and about what what um the actual problems were and uh. So so I'm not sure that um that just sort of give them. Beneficial, not necessarily for the people that are still engaged in the committee, but or in the advisory group, but uh for for the town.
My fear, I think, is we've lost some trust. We've lost them. And again, it's about perception, and so I don't know how. Get that back with the structure that we've now come to understand that. Um, I think that facilitator will be not even a facilitator, but somebody, yeah, I guess facilitators help us. To think about things in the right way will help. But again, I think. I think we're gonna find a lot less people that come back to the team now. Think the voting would make does make a difference, but they not that we're gonna. Change it necessarily, but would that does that make a difference? I mean, the voting power.
If you're playing that in here, so. What the subcommittee is gonna do is they're gonna make a recommendation to the board.
Right.
And we're not gonna decide it at that meeting like on the eleven. So if. So if um. Every member on the committee, whether it's board or community, had a vote, we can vote for. A recommendation to the boards. And then the board just. That that way it's passed up to the board at our board meeting. Then we decide. However, yes, whether we. So I don't know.
I also don't know that. They they need to vote on what you recommended before, because there's gonna be a sitting. The board is there. And so, I mean, the 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 need for that sort of disappeared because what we committed to by making what it. Is regular board member attendance and. Important to decision-making. You know, and and not to say we worked that before, but certainly I I am not as educated about this as all those people who sat through everyone.
But your action items aren't worn. So you can't take action on them.
We don't have action items on that. And we we gave that.
That way they can make.
The meeting has to be one.
Yeah.
I mean, then another option is we need to go forward as our board leaders to join and share their opinions and we put another tool. Or we're here to survey or. Do you need to hear people to feel included? We need to find a way to do that.
I think the the way that we had it in the past would have benefits or one or two of. Hey, the group has made this recommendation. Now we can go out and sell that. Because we know X, Y, Z. Here are the reasons that we chose what we did. Even if that uh uh choice might seem sort of crazy, you know, out of space. Or not, I mean, we we chose what we did, uh, uh, you know, because we were. But um, yeah, now that we've sort of taken that away, I'm not sure that we can go, we can put that toothpaste back in the tube. And set that structure up up again, so. But but I think, you know, for for as far as sort of the agenda goes and having. Uh, some resetting of expectations of of where we are and then. I think that's the agenda item right there. The update of of what's going on between C and. PRC minutes. Oh, I don't fully understand that. Interested to hear more about it, um, but. Um, yeah, then then. Going going from there.
Alright. So we will see in the next couple of days here an agenda for that and we'll work through whatever challenges we have and on the agenda, what will be the reset? And we'll be on the map. So that's in the next next day.
You have to warn partners.
And that will be that.
Yeah. Everybody's. I guess somebody's, I don't, I'm not computers.
Sir, I'm married.
There, so. We'll probably, I think we'll probably be on for it. For that. I think we're gonna plan on it. Okay, with that, I'm gonna move on.
I don't know that I could commit to that because I've got.
We're moving on right here, so Mark, I'm moving on. Alright. On the three current building proposals, I said, in in the course of meeting planning, I said, um. To each of you a question. Do you wanna settle this now? And if you do, can we please? With the three current meeting proposal? I don't wanna talk to you about a potential motion that I have written down here. Consider the following action on the three building proposal. As you know. In the absence of state and federal funding, the Danville school board. This is it. The Danville school board should set aside the three building options that we previously considered as being too expensive. For the test. That is what I'd ask you to consider right now. If if at some point this the the state changes the way that they fund these projects. And money comes available, some sort of matching fund or some sort of something, so federal money comes available in similar way. Then perhaps these projects will become more viable, but currently. Does anybody care to consider that motion?
That's that's hard. That's not hard to the.
I start new filter, but that would be federal fund.
Still looking for a motion.
I'm saying, but like, because we because we talked about this, we talked about these three options. Being too expensive, we're letting set them aside so that when we reset our expectations next week, those three options are a closed business. And the way that which you can't, and they don't have to, they don't have to go on forever, because if the state changes their funding, it's possible that that one of them is gonna be viable.
Why do you even have to do that? I saw.
People keep asking.
We said. I'm gonna go back to the back there.
When you're talking about. Making the current seventy million or that dinner amount. Off the table, I think as a public person, you say, wow, that's huge. I mean, it it's only perception. You don't have a final number and even though you've thrown some numbers around the meetings before. You say. We just can't do it right now. And if the state does, we need to do something. Yes, there's no doubt that somebody needs to do something, but I don't know how you. And I mean, what would what would it take to bring it back to the table? I mean, you wouldn't wanna bring it back in two months or three months, but I mean, is there about. Some way of doing that without. You know, sticking a stick in your in your heart and say, well, I gotta follow my sword again now because we reinvented it. I don't know. I mean. Or the state says, oh, we've got so many million, it's only gonna cost us. I don't know. A third or two thirds or whatever the project was, it sounds like a something that we could do now. People might be interested, but right now at. Seventy million, I mean, I I mean, I talk about. In my own mind, you know. My taxes already are at a certain level and I really don't wanna go out and get a job at sixty plus. I mean, yes, I could work and I'm able, but I'm. You know. I'm doing a self-business and I'm giving away stuff. I'm not making any money, so I'm not helping the situation any, so. Yes, I mean, if if the perception is that. Hey, everybody we talk to is concerned about the the taxes going up. You know, is there some way of mitigating that with the town? And that does make an interesting option. Now, you as a board have to decide that. That's not, you know, my decision.
But so if the last. Advisory would be one of the. So in that last discussion, it was very clear that there's no there's no sentiment for any of those three options. I thought what the decision coming out of that was that we're opening up to consider other alternatives. I I think the perception is say, well, we're just going to, we're gonna close out those three options will make it. Hard if not possible if. To bring those back. I don't think you have to do anything more at this point than see if there is a cheaper way to get to where we need to get. And and I continue to think that closing, especially closing out. The make-good option. Is not going to be.
Make-good options, not one of the three options.
So I think that's the clarify.
Let me clarify the three options that three options are. The original proposal, which is option one. The modified proposal to have a cafeteria is option two. And the third option is the new school building over here. None of those options are the make-good options. The make-good option is not one of the three options that are allowed to be considered by the advisory.
Wait, can I clarify? So we have option one. Build an elementary up there. And renovate.
And and the full renovation.
For renovation. Option two, still. An elementary back there.
Still over there.
Nope. A little extra in the bus. Bus loop and renovate.
Similar, right?
And then option three is.
And so in the absence of state or federal funding. Goes to the option, this board has been too expensive. Move on, not the maker.
I think it'd be important, I think it'd be important. To spin it as. Uh, we realize that these three options might not be the solution. And make a public statement that. Um, we are looking at other at other options.
Would you like to make a statement?
I'll make the motion.
Take it.
That the board. Uh, offers a public statement that. We are. Not. Restricting our options as the three that were presented. We're open to. Other options.
Might be more bold than that. People are really fuzzy about where the board that those seventy million over options that. They're like, are they still on the table? Are they not on the table?
Just go to the next meeting and say, we're. We we agreed that we're gonna work for alternatives to the. The to the. To the options. You know, the sixty, seventies. I think it'd attract people. If if they knew that. We're not here to discuss one, two, or three. And that's it.
Right.
But if you. If she has great idea.
Yeah, I agree with that. Right, you said you're setting aside those three to entertain more financially viable options. Yeah.
So. Do you want to take action? Do you want to take action?
I think we should take action. I agree.
I mean, making a a statement now. Will attract people this way. Maybe the board, the board. I'll retract my motion. And I'll let you say it.
I'll be like in the world. I moved to um. Set aside the building options. Are you remember this? That were previously considered by the building advisory group that are over sixty million dollars, options one, two, and three. Which is a run of. Had to get in all that, right? Until. There are we are financial resources available to discuss them. And continue and we can and we'll continue conversations about more viable. Options to address our needs. Do you wanna get that?
She's gonna write it up.
Also, I'm definitely.
I got a motion on the table. I have a second to the motion on the table to special.
To to allow a facilitator brainstorm, like if there were sort of.
No, that's all known. I think that's all already we established that we're gonna do that.
Or maybe that could be like what Eric said, those established rules and we'll go to the next meeting, talk about, that could fall into that, you know, too, for the procedural.
Yeah, I think you just need to say words that must, but yeah. I think you said until.
Sad, exactly. Can you put this question?
The question I would have is, it was mentioned a hundred sixty thousand or something that's already expended because of all the engineering work that went into it. Is there any money in reserve for these new ideas or is this gonna be a a free idea? Is it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, so it was hundred, it was hundred twenty thousand, but.
Whatever the money was, I'm I was just trying to quote what I thought.
The needs assessment has been done and that was a lot of what some of that that expense was the needs assessment and the drawings. And so a lot of the needs have already been definitely, we have pretty good awareness of the.
Right, but there's not any more money that would be expected.
In order to get anything actually drawn up and then yes, they will.
Yes, I agree with that.
So but for right now, I don't think there needs to be any more to to go further into further assessment. Good, alright, all the favor of that motion. Alright, that's those two. So. You should represent your search. You have somebody who might interest herself. And if you would, please, tell us who you are. How do you spell? How do you spell?
A A Y.
Okay.
Uh, I'm in the tenth grade.
Alright, so you're in the tenth grade. How many years have you gone into animal school?
Uh, I moved here in the eighth grade. From Alabama.
Okay, do you consider yourself a student in good standing at Danville School?
Yes.
What do you think about longboard meetings?
Um, not my favorite.
So we're gonna give you an idea. This is what we do. We do it a lot. There are many. And so we'd like you to come back another time and see what you think about. Cause we gotta see if we'll come back. That's probably the danger. We're gonna invite you back one more time. And then we're gonna see what we can consider. And we've all got your application. You know, so we'll go back and review the application. Now that we know which specific K we. From Alabama, this is, I'm sure we throw a K from Alabama. And thank you for coming. So you have any questions for K right now? Alright, you have any questions for us? Okay, if you have any for the next time you can learn, so. Okay, then I'll move on with that one. And what's the last thing in our board business is new. And what's the last thing in our board business is new hire approval. And so we have a new hire and I'll turn this over first to the superintendent.
Um yeah, I look, so uh Dave found somebody um. Looking at his credentials and. Renaissance person, he's got a background in building trades, he's got a background. Very kind of eclectic, people experience, but. He runs his own company, he's worked in the building trade, and somebody else is. He seems to be really uh in the nature of the notion of uh. We're acting kids and working. Program is all about, Dave can speak to work in seven. Describing, you want to talk about.
I think they are that Renaissance description really describes this, not every day you have a candidate who comes in. Who is certified in green building by yesterday, tomorrow, I'm like, build school, who has a master's in public administration, Columbia, has built two boats. In Boston Harbor and worked in a. By Enzo. And being an environmental educator for. City kids um on a uh tall ship, so there's a real, this brings up phenomenal. Background, he's very excited about uh teaching, he's really coming. I was really excited to see.
Um, I'm impressed that he built his own boats. I I don't see that anything is going to be happening here, and it'll be very simple, any well, any flow. Yeah, I I I'm I I'm just looking for the. You you really got me hooked on this because. Uh turning students out, if they're not going to college, if they're not going in military, you you just don't want to turn them out, you you need students that have learned a trade. And that's really what it's really what.
That's a role of the tax center.
You and I should probably schedule you to talk about your perceptions. The role of this program is hard to finish. Of of the program I do has always been preparing younger students for more experiential hands-on career, given the possible placement in the exam. So all the building trades teacher in this school has always been a free um pretty much focused on construction, on building trades, which he has. And on skill building, we never have us, we've never had somebody who's dedicated welding instructor or dedicated public instructor, because those are specialized fields that are. Where techs are worthy, that are in the preview or regional tech center. And we've had, we've had welding instruction and we've had. Intro to welding, which. But I never said we were going to. So I think.
No, that's that's one thing that's uh.
Now, and it's a. But it's. Right, so we get a student who is. Who builds skill, who has built an habit of mining, who beitrays once, who has technical experience in their early years. Who goes to the tech center and does the plumbing, heating, cooling, professional level. And then they're employable, but that's always been a long reason. I don't, never said.
No, I, yeah, I'm I'm just, yeah.
You're saying, I I are you saying that being a boatwright is not necessarily a transferable skill in this region? And if our duty skills translate to what we.
I think Dave's perception is, like we talked about Dave too, that is a common perception of the program and it is. That it's matching a trade, a full trade program, I think that's where that might be coming from.
So those people aren't looking at what he's been telling us, and so. People with a perception that it's wrong, that won't look at the data to get it changed, can't be reasoned. And so if somebody tells you that you're wired, how come you're turning in all these bummer? And then the Danville Work Program has introduced literature that says, this is what we do, hands-on and experiential learning. And nothing there says plumbing and they say you're putting out bummer, that person's not being reasoned.
I think what you explained, Dave, is.
Making forty dollars now.
Right, and so and so. I I see it as.
I don't, I don't want, I want a a sailboat building class, I mean, I I don't want, I don't want to be.
I'm just talking about his his resume and why he is a highly qualified.
Right.
If I was to master technical shifts previous jobs, I'd probably hire him.
There's, you know, there's the students who learn better with experience and it maybe they're not doing well in school and it's a way to. Give them opportunity that helps them to succeed. In addition to the traditional learning and it's prepping them for perhaps whatever the whole trade.
Right.
Program for junior and spare year, so it's prepping those young younger kids to get those skills, build their confidence, feel good, that was my understanding of the conversation.
That is that, right, there's also, this was a particular position because it's locally funded, because. Under the scope of what I supervised, but it's always been a fairly good school, goes farther into building trades, you know, we're talking about. High house construction, the house project that's been going on in our school the last decade plus, um we are talking about a more specific building trades program. But we've only ever taught that for two periods today, right, so we could teach construction trades. But it's also they feel like, again, we're talking about specifics, build trades, we're also talking about.
There are, there's, there are limits, there are limitations on what you can have for programming and not technical. Yeah, so I think you you have to be cognizant of that, we would, even if everybody at this table wanted to have plumbing program, we probably couldn't be told a lot of that to show the plumbing. But one of the things that I think that that occurs to me about Zachary when I talk with him, I've had a couple of conversations with him. Is I see him as. As as a young, I'm old enough to call everybody a young man now, a young man who's about a lot of things. Interesting things with science and building trades, et cetera, who can be an example to students of what you can do if you have. And that's, you know, and, you know, we talk about, you can talk about teaching skills and teaching skills is one thing, but a bigger bigger part can be. Is inspiring kids to want to learn, that's where I see advantage of finding somebody like Zachary. I don't know where, I don't know how Dave found him, we didn't have that conversation, but he walked into our lives here and he's going to be an asset to the school, kids are going to. Go along to him because of his personality and because he has a skill set and he knows how to work. Work work in his program and he's going to inspire kids to do the things that we want them to do to stay in school and be ready to go to tech center and get. Your electric, electrician's license.
Does he have a teaching license? Qualified for the job, has a teaching license, are you ready to hire? I'll consider a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll take, I'll take, I'll take it from somebody, what is your motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the new hire of Zachary Baker.
Okay, I've got a motion on the table, can I get a second? Thank you, sir, um in discussion. All the thing. Motion carries. But that's that, okay, um what's up next, our list of agendas is.
G of R C one eighty-one to thirty-five, and of R C's up forty-one eighteen, and half run, and they are currently going to think Max for stats. Eighty-one to thirty-five with the J V five. Clearly stated, make the attorney.
Alright. Again, we need to talk, we're going to talk about our next meeting date right now, how soon do you think this amended budget can be ready? Maybe next week, Thursday, well, I'm busy, I'm busy Wednesday, I want to commit, um Thursday, who's got it? I I I need a meeting, I need a meeting day and a budget to talk.
So this will be a special meeting, so we have a two-day window.
Okay, so you're already meeting as a board on Wednesday. Make that dual purpose meeting.
You could have an expanded agenda, I don't think that's.
I don't, I I think that's, I think that meeting has already been scheduled to talk about the building in the building. And I think it's open in the can of worms there, people that want to start from scratch on everything, I don't want to start from scratch.
Let me talk to, let me talk to Mike tomorrow.
So everybody heads on a swivel for when the next special meeting is, the next meeting of this board as is as a committee. On January the eleventh, and then subsequently our next actual meeting is our next scheduled working meeting in February.
So can you set some dates next week?
Just the eleven.
Just the eleven.
But if we did, if we did six o'clock in the lot, it's at five thirty, there's a lot of times I can do that, alright. I have questions about that culture. So.
We'll talk to Mike tomorrow. Play, I'll put the mic tomorrow, I get back to you and say this is. Be ready and then we'll nail down the day.
Expect here to be a meeting. I'd love to have you there, but I I can't schedule it on your class. What if we're right, it's done. Okay, so we'll all be in touch, um that's it, I'll let you get a motion to adjourn. Take one second. Thank you both.